Good evening, everybody. The time is 6:03 PM on February 13th, 2020. This is the regular scheduled meeting of the City of Vader Council. Roll call.
Donna Rogers.
Here.
Jason Daly.
Present.
Joe Shai.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Yes.
And Samantha Lovely.
Here.
Excellent. We have a quorum. Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Daly, do the honors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. I didn't realize when I wrote all that down, it would make us have a two-page agenda. So code enforcement actions are closed at 706 B Street, and all of the fines have been paid in full. And so we're working on the correct process for reimbursing that inter-fund loan to the sewer capital reserve. That should be happening soon, since we get the right paperwork in place for that. The comprehensive plan. We actually, just today, just this evening, got the draft from Gary Cooper right here. So the planning committee should be able to approve the draft at the end of the month, and then it'll be presented for the final approval to the council after that. The park board, they're still working on their master plan, but they're making progress. Along with that master plan, they're going to have some public input sessions and an online public survey. They want to get to a 50% matching grant, which is due by May 1st. So they need to have that master plan done. This week, our employees, they were going to attend the webinar, but you guys got the notes from the webinar, is that correct? Because we're busy working on something else at the time. But they do have that training, so they're going to be reviewing that. Vader employee policy. So I'm not sure if council members are aware of this, but our employee policy that covers things like sick leave, the family acts, and different things like that, it's over 10 years old. And so we may not even be up to current state standards. So there's a grant available for getting that rewritten for free, and so we're going to be pursuing that. Codification update. So there's been a couple of new snags with the codification. We did get the document, which is great, but it seems like there's some new state requirements that are going to have to be met as far as reviews. So we might have to send that up to... Diane, what's the... Who needs to look at that for the land use portion?
The Department of Ecology.
Department of Ecology. So even though we didn't change anything, they still need to review it because we're going to re-approve it. So that's going to have to happen. Waste water treatment plant update. So Civil West sent us an update. I think, do you guys have that in your packet, the monthly update? Well, the summary, if you do, great. If you don't, the summary was that they expect to be going out for a bid during the winter this year. So we have that soon. I'm also working to get the wastewater treatment plant on the state line item in the budget. So Morton did this. They were able to get some money from the state to help fund their wastewater treatment facility upgrade. So I'd like to do the same thing for us. And they got $3.5 million for their project. So hopefully, if we could get less than half of that, we could have ours fully funded. I'm working on that. Update on outstanding Vader Municipal Court cases. So this has taken a lot of Diane's time. If you remember earlier, at the beginning of this year, there was a lady here that, on behalf of her son, and he was having some issues with tickets in the Vader court. So what we found is that when we switched from Winlock Municipal Court to Lewis County District Court, the old cases didn't get transferred. And so they've still kind of been limbo. And so we're working on getting Winlock to transfer those to Lewis County so folks can continue their payment plans and things like that. And upcoming MRSC workshops on Public Records Act. That's coming up. That should be in your packet with the dates for those. We have some of our employees are planning on attending that. And it's open to council members as well, elected officials. So if anyone else wants to go, go ahead and take a look at that, and we can put together a carpool or something.
I have a van, so...
You got a van. All right. That's what's been going on. All right. Council reports. Any council reports?
Okay. I do. I just want to say that our attorney bill this month was for January, $3,300. $1,500 of that went to an executive session. And so I don't know whether I should do this, maybe wait some of the things... This isn't exactly a report. These are things I would like to see that we do. So I maybe save that to the end. But for that, that was... That's it for the first part of it.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Agenda approval. I don't have any changes to the agenda.
Me neither. I would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda meeting as written.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the agenda as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Miss Love Lady. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the special counsel on 1/30/2020 and for the meeting on 1/23/2020 as written.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve both sets of minutes as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Samantha, I didn't write down the final numbers, so...
Do you have it, Diane? I mixed this in, sorry.
Did you? I just didn't get that last first of February.
What's that?
I have it written down, but I wanted to make sure it was right. I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the first half of February 2020 in the amount of $28,515.90.
We had a motion by Miss Love Lady to approve the vouchers in the amount of $28,515.90. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any discussion?
We also have to change the...
Do we have to change? What do we have to change? And also amend the end of December 2019 to $7,886.83. And the amend as well, extended December 2019 to $19,043.27.
Okay. We have a motion on the table, Miss Love Lady, to approve the vouchers as written, including the reductions for December. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports, Lewis County Sheriff's Office.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Kevin Albert, someone with the Lewis County Sheriff's Office. I'm going to give you a report for January activity for January of 2020. We had 318 citizen contacts. We had a total of 27 calls. 10 of those calls while we were working our normal scheduled shifts. The other 17 while we responded to while we were off shift. We had 25 traffic stops resulting in three traffic infractions and three misdemeanor arrests. And I assume you guys got a list of the calls we responded to. Any questions? Concerns?
One stolen car recovered.
One stolen power outage. Yes.
I don't know if, just recently, we had vandalism on my... My roommate had somebody squirt paint...
Paint thinner.
Paint thinner on his car. Paint remover. Just like Monday or Sunday, Friday, Saturday night. And then my neighbors had people messing with their vehicles. You said people messed them with your gas recently?
Yeah, last month.
Last month. So that whole stuff is going on. I don't know what's... I don't know any of the information about my roommate's... He made someone mad or whatever, but there's still someone doing some stuff at night.
You know, we called it in.
I don't know if we called it in or not.
Yeah, you really should call that in if you just have it... Especially if someone's managing your property.
Yeah, there's community damage too, so I'll let it go.
Thank you very much. City business. Counsel to consider recommendations for the clerk treasurer position. She has two documents. First, my recommendation letter, and second is the offer letter. I will read this. After several weeks of advertising, we received five applicants for our clerk treasurer position. One applicant stood out from the others to be uniquely qualified for this position. Jason Daly and myself both feel that Diane Floyd has the technical skills and knowledge needed to continue the successful business of the City of Vader. Her previous municipal experience as deputy clerk, as well as very payroll clerical and administrative roles held elsewhere are exactly what our city requires. We believe that her pleasant disposition, active listening, and communication skills will represent the city well during customer service interactions. For the last month, she has demonstrated excellent work ethic competency in the position, the ability to multitask, and a high level of professionalism. I am pleased to submit Diane Floyd to you for your consideration and confirmatory vote.
Well, I'd like to make a...
A motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Diane Floyd as our clerk treasurer.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the clerk treasurer role for Diane Floyd. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Miss Love Lady. Any more discussion? All those in favor of approving Diane Floyd as clerk treasurer, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. And my condolences. Moving on to item two. Swearing in of newly hired office staff and appointed park board and planning committee members. So a few members from the last council meeting. We did approve Mr. Hall and Mr. Gall. As for our two different boards. And they are here tonight to be sworn in, as well as Diane Floyd. We did prepare that in case you did confirm her, which we were fairly certain you would. So would... Let's see. Do they one at a time?
Yeah.
Let's do them one at a time. Mr.?
Gall.
Gall, you're standing. Should we do that up here?
Yeah.
Let's do it. Usually do it.
You do that from the front, right?
Yep.
Right up here.
You want to take a picture?
Yeah, I was going to say.
I gotta go and make a picture.
Do you want to do it, Jason?
Yeah, Jason. Thank you, Jason.
Jason, send in the meat, will you?
All right. As usual. So if you raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Mason Gall, do solemnly swear...
I, Mason Gall, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform...
That I will faithfully and impartially perform...
...and discharge the duties...
And discharge the duties...
...of the Vader Planning Committee.
Of the Vader Planning Committee.
Of the City of Vader.
The City of Vader.
Washington, according to law.
Washington, according to law.
And the best of my abilities to help me go.
The best of my abilities to help me go.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall.
If you raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Randy Hall, do solemnly swear...
I, Randy Hall, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution and laws...
I will support the Constitution and laws...
...of the State of Washington.
The State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws...
And the Constitution and laws...
...of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
Faithfully and impartially.
...perform and discharge the duties...
Perform and discharge the duties.
...of the park board of the City of Vader.
Of the park board of the City of Vader.
According to law and the best of my ability...
According to law and the best of my ability.
...to help me go. Thank those gentlemen for volunteering. It's a lot of work, and we always appreciate our volunteers. Thank you. You are not a volunteer. Your oath is longer. Please raise your right hand. I, Diane Floyd...
I, Diane Floyd...
...hereby accept the position of clerk treasurer for the City of Vader.
Hereby accept the position of clerk treasurer for the City of Vader.
And do hereby solemnly swear...
And do hereby solemn... Hereby? Hereby solemnly swear...
...that I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
...perform and discharge the official duties...
Perform and discharge the official duties...
...of the Office of Clerk Treasurer...
Of the Office of Clerk Treasurer.
...as prescribed by the law...
As prescribed by the law.
And I do further hereby...
And I do further hereby...
...solemnly swear that I will support...
Solemnly swear that I will support...
...and uphold the Constitution and laws...
And uphold the Constitution and laws...
...of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Charter of the City of Vader.
And the Charter of the City of Vader.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...so help me God.
So help me God.
You're going to need your signatures before you leave on the document. I have a nasty tendency of doing that kind of thing and then saying too much. And then the people can't follow me afterwards. Thank you. All right. Item three, city business. Counsel to consider resolution 02-2020 bank signatories update. So this is to remove Jill Nielsen and Tammy, and replace them with Diane and Stephanie.
On the October... I've seen that Ken Smith's name is still on the bank account.
If... Is Ken still on the account?
He wasn't. Read the resolution now.
Well, he won't be now, as you can see here. Did it say that?
No. It was in the October... I can't think of the name.
Okay.
Where all the whole deals for the month and everything come in. And it shows his name is still on the bank account.
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't say... It doesn't... It only says who we're adding, or excuse me, who will be on there, not who used to be on there.
But it does say that the City Council hereby authorizes only the following individuals to sign bank checks.
It clears it out.
So yeah. So anything that is on there now will be gone because this is the most current.
Okay. Can't take any more vacations.
Do we have any council action on this?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 02-2020 for the bank signatories update.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve resolution 02-2020, the bank signatory update. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Miss Love Lady. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving res... Oh, Mike, did you say something?
Question. Yeah, there's a little bit of discussion that... Donna, please do not imply that Ken is picking money out of the account for vacation. That's just rude and wrong.
Oh, stop it. It was just a joke. Take a breath.
We have a motion on the table to approve resolution 02-2020. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving resolution 02-2020, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Did we get everyone to vote? Donna, did you vote?
Aye.
Oh, okay. Motion carries. Last item of city business. Counsel to consider discuss options for appointment of mayor's position. So we do have several people that have put their names in. Most recently, this week, Ms. Costello has put her name in. Previously, Mr. Jocelyn.
We skipped four.
We're on four right now.
That's a fire inspection, is it not?
Oh, are you working off an old version of the... I think you picked up the old version of the agenda. Item number four is the mayor's position. The inter-local agreement was removed earlier before it was posted.
Okay. Perfect.
So who else? We had Costello, Kevin Flynn, Jocelyn.
Bob.
Mo, you have put your name in. Yep. And Bob Goff.
And Angela. She put her name in as well.
Who?
Angela.
Angela, you put your name in as well?
I want to.
Oh, you want to? Okay.
I want to start.
We have another person. And I also submitted a letter just before this meeting saying that I was interested in the position as well to the council. As a discussion with my family. And after the last month of being able to properly perform the duties, we've agreed that it's something that I can continue to handle if the council so desires.
Well, having heard that, I will... I'd like to withdraw my name.
Okay.
See what you did.
So those are the names that have been submitted. Is there any council action this week?
I'd like to nominate Joe Shai as our new mayor.
We have one nomination for Joe Shai. Are there any other nominations at this time?
I'll second that.
Well, there's a...
Oh, we don't second.
You don't second it? There is a proper procedure for this. I need to ask two more times if there are any more nominations for mayor. And that is the second time I've asked.
I know we... I thank everybody for putting in their name. I know I've talked to Ken, and with this, I... I'm going to...
Thank you. I'll ask a third time. Are there any other nominations for mayor? If there being only one nomination, may I have a motion to appoint Joe Shai as mayor of the City of Vader to serve the certification of the next municipal election?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Joe Shai has been appointed to serve as the mayor of the City of Vader to serve until the certification of the next municipal election. I will continue to do the best that I can do for the city.
So do you want us to swear you in now?
A blank... Here is a blank document. Yes.
Is that leave a position on council available for any of these other wonderful people that wanted to...
Baby steps.
One thing at a time. One thing at a time, kind of thing, is what I've done.
Give him the longest sentence you've ever...
Mine's the shortest one.
You're breaking the law. Okay. Read your right hand. I, Joe Shai...
I, Joe Shai.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the State of Washington.
And the laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform...
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And discharge the duties of mayor...
And discharge the duties of mayor.
Of the City of Vader, Washington.
Of the City of Vader, Washington.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability. And as we pointed out a few minutes ago, there is now a vacancy on the city council. It is not on the city business for tonight, but it will be in the coming meetings.
How do we go about doing that?
Talk to your... Talk to a council member?
Just the same way...
Same exact way you did for mayor.
Or put your name...
Just want to clarify.
Bring a letter into city halls and make sure all of the council members get to see it.
And if you submit a letter, Diane will make sure we get it.
Yep. Public comment.
Okay. We have Mo. Dirty Mo. I'm always dirty Mo. I'm always covered in something. Okay. So Jeremy Moen, 613 B Street. Sorry, I always put Mo in there. You got to pull back on your name. So at 613, right next door, is a vacant lot, not being used. So that's owned by the Rops. The Rops. And I've been in communication for several weeks, and they're considering allowing me access because I would like to create a community garden for the City of Vader. I think it would create some camaraderie, give kids an opportunity to learn, get their hands in some dirt, and maybe bring us together just a smidge. While I'm waiting for them and still considering, I have cordoned off a part of my property, our property. So we have... Right now, it's 29 by 22 approximately, and there will be space for six boxes. Six boxes for families who want to come and garden and learn and get dirty and have some fun in the sun. And bring your kids, because we're going to have a dirt box where they can plant their own. We're hoping to coordinate with the preschool up on the hill. Have little kids down and all that business. So it'll be called Your Neighbor's Garden because it's your neighbor's garden. And so I could use some volunteers. Anyone got some extra time and they want to help get some posts in the ground, that sort of thing. And I would really ask if any of y'all have posts, hogwire, chicken wire, those sorts of things. Instead of throwing them away, come bring them to me at 613 B Street. Just do it in the back, please. But it would be wonderful if I could have some community involvement in something that really is for all of you guys. And so spread the word. I'm going to make that... And so, spread the word. I'm gonna make up some little sign-up sheets. I'll put them by the front door. More information to come, because it's still kind of an infant, but I really would love to see all of us come together at Your Neighbor's Garden. 613 B Street. So, I'm really in need of posts and hogwire. I, I want to thank the current owners that we've got. Mr. Jerry, oh, he's, he's wonderful. He's, he has donated so much to really get this going, and we can get it off and started this year even, which is far above my other business plan. So, posts and wire, please and thank you. And thank you, Mr. Jerry. Also, I'm on the May Day Committee, and so I'm here to tote a little bit for May Day. We have so much fun. We really do. And y'all would have a blast. You don't have to come to the meetings, but it would be great if we could have a few extra hands on the second, the day of. It'll be, it'll be easy. You have plenty of people to boss around, so you don't have to think about it. You can just help out, and pitch in, and have fun, and even before the second, we're doing things like making games, et cetera, et cetera. So, you can contact myself, you can contact Anita down at the restaurant, and, yeah. And so, hope to see you there, May Day, and maybe even before. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And then Ms. Judy? Oh, Ms. Judy. Judy Costello, 709 A Street, Vader. First off, thank you very much for the garbage. Taking care of that the next day, like you said you would. I appreciate that. Was there a final solution to how to handle that, because I know that's been a couple times done that, you know, it just kind of appears and then goes away. So, is there garbage service being set up? You don't have to answer me now. You can, you know, think about that, whatever. The other thing is, is I came up here and requested, and so did 23 other people in the community in reference to Mr. Gross and his verbal actions representing the city of Vader on the planning committee. And I wanted to know if you could please tell me what the verdict is on that, or action. Thank you so very much, everyone.
Okay. The council hasn't taken any action at this time.
Can we still talk? Will the council be taking action on this?
I don't know. Will the council be taking action on this?
I guess, I guess what my problem with all of this is, is that it's like the new people you signed in to park board and planning. They serve at your pleasure, the mayor.
Correct.
And it gives, and they're volunteers. They're not employees, or paid positions, or anything like that. You know, we're not union. I remember a day sitting right here when Jason and Steve both got ejected off the park board, just out of the clear blue, with no warning whatsoever, and those spots were filled. And so, I just am questioning why this is something that I feel is really wrong, and it should be addressed on a lot of different levels, and why it is dragging on, and seems to be painful for some folks.
The council has talked about it at great length, and discussed the issue. There has not been any action taken at this time. Certainly on the, on the minds of, the, the public comments that we've got, as well as the different letters that we received, they were all taken very seriously.
Okay, I appreciate that. I can let them know. Do I need to keep coming back every meeting and standing up? Because I do have other fun things to talk about.
You can. It's public comment.
I understand that, but I should like to not just have a comment with you.
I understand. But, just, nothing else to say at the, at this time. Mr. Jocelyn.
Maybe moving forward, maybe we should make, the city should have some code of conduct.
You're absolutely right. Some cities do have code of conduct for their appointed and their elected officials. The city of Vader has a code of conduct for its employees, but we do not, which includes attire to wear to work in the office, as well as attitudes and stuff.
Just because you're, you know, free, or donating your time doesn't mean that you can act like a child.
It's been, it's been discussed, that, Donna, I think you, you brought it up a meeting or two ago about...
Yeah, I believe I did.
Yeah.
Just move, just moving forward, I mean, just learning from this. I think it was a lesson learned. Lesson learned. I mean, I mean, even if you can't do anything, or not going to do anything, you just move forward from this point on.
And that is the MRSE things that says we should have a code of conduct for the council, or, or volunteers, anything. But they've never done it over the years.
Most adults, if they're adults, should know how to, how to specialize, take care of themselves, but...
Well, I think that's one of the things that I'm gonna be addressing, and my, I have quite a list.
That, that would be my recommendations, have some type of code of conduct, and then it's black and white. They don't have to have this discussion.
Yep. Any other public comment?
Angela wanted to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello, this is my first time here. I've been wanting to come here for a while, but just never got the chance. I live on 77th, 707, 7th Street.
Can you give us your full name, please?
Angela Mollan, M-O-L-D-E-N. I would like to propose the idea of a baseball field here, right here behind the preschool. We do have a parent advising from the Castle Rock School District, and Mr. Green, I had a chance to talk to him, and he gave us the go-ahead, and told me to come and present it, and I think it'd be awesome, you know, to bring, you know, capital to Vader, and people to come to Vader, and tournaments, and baseball, and just to generate family, and just have a reputation. And I think we should put a baseball field here in Vader, Washington. So, I don't know what the process is.
Well, that, that...
It's school property, so they're gonna have to, I was hoping that they would put a soccer field, or...
Yep. So, I talked to him, and he said, "Yeah, let's do it."
And they have all the equipment. There's nothing stopping them from not doing it.
Right. So, I think, I don't know the process, to go forward.
It's up to the school. With it being their property in town.
So, you guys, we have nothing, they have to...
In the community, we're all for it. We're good.
Okay, awesome. I'm gonna get that going.
I always kind of think of it now, you know, adding, suggesting for you. I mean, that's a great place for... There's a lot of people around there, and it's too small for them to use for, for a school property, but, but we can use it as community property.
My whole family, my husband, we're all baseball people, and, you know, we volunteered many, many years for my kids' baseball for a coach, and team parent, and, you know, maintenance of the baseball.
And there's still like a backstop and everything already back there. There is.
Yeah. I mean, it's perfect.
It's just cool.
And it brings such a camaraderie for the town, and for the kids, you know.
I'll talk to you afterwards, because I, I talked to their old principal about, when they took over the school grounds, about refurbishing that, because they, they have situations down there at the school where they don't have enough ballparks to actually have football games, or practices.
Practices. Yes, I think it's, it would be awesome.
It's something that I might as well report for, for Castle Rock. I'm going to some meeting here.
It's the last Thursday. It's the last Thursday of the month, and it's at 6:00 to 7:00, right here at preschool. It just started. Our first meeting was last.
And I missed, are you the one that told me that I ever called me, or someone called me, and I, I got, okay, good.
Till I can...
And so, I plan on going to that, and, and...
Yeah, because I totally want to get that started. So, is everybody excited?
Volunteers. All you need is volunteers.
Yes, I'm, I'm volunteering. My husband knows everything about baseball, and we know about all that good stuff, so.
Great.
Want to start your own team kind of thing?
Oh, yeah.
Perfect. But that's, that's a lot of work. I've heard of a lot of people that started out, and they're out, so, good. Perfect.
It's fun work, so, yeah.
Was, is there any other public comment?
I think the park board would be somewhere where you want to start with that, too, but even though that's not on the park, I think the park board is planning on putting one down at the park.
It was in our...
500 years from now?
Yeah, pretty much.
I'm sorry. There's a lot of projects, I mean...
You put them on the...
I always wanted one down there. That was...
Right.
All right, moving on. Elected official comment. Elected official comment.
That would be me, then. Nobody else wants to comment?
We'll start with you.
Please comment.
Okay. Okay, well, I have quite a list, and one of them is, do we have any council policies?
Like, for instance, like we were just discussing a, a code of conduct.
A code of conduct, that's one thing, but then councils have policies about how we conduct business, or different things like that. Anyway, MRSE has programs that you can, we can copy, take from, or whatever. I'm just wondering if we even have one.
I, I don't remember ever seeing one, all the years I've been doing this.
I mean, I've never, never heard of it. I think that would be a thing that we should probably work on.
We can research the ones that we can see over town.
I don't think there are.
Should be easier now with the codification book that we got, so.
So, the next one is having workshops. I've, I've read where usually at the beginning of the year, the council has meetings and tries to come together about the things we want to accomplish in the city for the rest of the year. So, one of those that's at the top of my list is the infrastructure of our community, because it is just really in bad shape. And the worst one is probably our historical jail that's just rotting off of what foundation is left. And it needs a new roof, and it also needs that chimney repair in it. And that is really, it's a historical site. It's registered as a historical site, so I would hate to lose that. And the canopy at Wearden Park needs a new roof, and I'm not sure what the repair of the bathrooms are in. I have no idea, but I'm sure there's probably something there. Our city shop needs a little repair, and what else do we have here? City Hall. I kind of understand that there's, might be a couple of soft spots in the roof, so that's probably a concern. And I think we need to start looking at the budget and figuring out where we're gonna get some money to do this, because I don't think this is an option left anymore. It needs to be done, and there needs to be, there really needs to be some attention paid to our infrastructure. And as long as I've lived here, 35 years, I've never seen the council ever really do any input into this community as far as money, or being, having any leadership in this community, to bring the community together. It's always left to volunteers, and I've always heard, "Yeah, we'll do it, go ahead," but it never happens. And I think that takes leadership from the council to do that, and I think it's time that the council starts stepping up to do it. And I think we need to back off attorney fees. That's one of my big things, and they're gonna be hearing a lot about that from me. I really have a problem with that. There is more MRSE that we could be using, and this is no fault of the employees, because they've been told, "Just call the attorney for anything and everything," and that just isn't good. So, I hope that the council can come together here and take some leadership in this, and try to really take another look at the budget, and where we can save money, and put it more toward our community instead of other outside things. And I, I do have a problem with the planner. I'm gonna let that go for right now, though. But on another note, we need to do some marketing for our community, I think. And one of the things with Judy's House has brought to the attention a lot of the people that live in the community that have some of these old historical houses, and I saw on Facebook how that kind of brought a lot of people together doing that, and Judy and I and another lady a couple of years ago went down to Long Beach, and there's a street there where all the old houses, Victorian houses, whatever, they all have a plaque on their homes that gives the date that they were built in, and I think that would be a good thing for the community, and maybe even some of the people who live in these homes that would be willing, to maybe put a little plaque out, or a picture frame or something with some of the history that they know about that home, because Vader is full of history. It just, I think that would be a way to bring the community together and give some pride in this community, because, you know, I've seen on Facebook, and for years I've heard people say that they're ashamed to say they're from Vader when they're out in public, and I'd like to see this council and the community come together and put a new face on Vader, and make it someplace that you're proud to say I'm from. I'm done.
I'd say I think that over the last 10 years, there's been a lot of progress made in Vader, or maybe even a little longer than that, and, and I think the perceptions in the greater, the greater Lewis County area have been changing, and that I think we have quite a bit better view among, among the other communities.
What is it that's been made Vader better? I mean, what is it?
It's, it was before my time, before I was here, but to my understanding, there were a lot of issues with, with crime, and drugs, and things like that, that have been much, much, much improved. I mean, our property values have gone up quite a bit.
Oh, that's good.
I mean, we're doing a lot better than we've ever...
I wasn't talking about that. I didn't even, that doesn't even enter my mind, because I don't do drugs. I'm not involved in crime, so I don't think about it.
But those are the issues that, that the city had, and, and through a lot of hard work, it's better.
But these are the ones, these are the ones that really we can, need to do something about now, but...
Okay. Thank you.
In my opinion. So, I want to know if this council is going to do that, instead of just saying, "Thanks for saying it."
So, you're on the council. If you want a workshop, let's have a workshop.
Let's have several workshops.
Okay.
And I love the plaque idea. I'm not opposed to putting a plaque in front of my house, given that it's one of the older properties in town.
Yeah.
And we have a lot of old pictures of it.
Yeah, I think that's a neat thing, and I'd really like to see our parks, something done with our parks. This is, you know, everybody says, "Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead," but these poor people that spend all these park boards for years, and, and they have all of these plans and everything, but the city never gives them any money to do anything with. So, I want to see some action here, instead of just saying, "Oh, yeah, go ahead." I really do. I want to see something done for Vader, for a change. I think maybe I might be done.
Any other council comments? Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned at 6:49 PM. Thank you, everybody.